Would you please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
McComber.
Here.
Rowland.
Here.
Seeliger.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
The minutes from the meeting that was held on May 1st, 2017, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any amendments or additions to these minutes? See, none is there? A motion to approve?
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
There's no correspondence.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do we have any special recognitions this evening? Thank you. Very good. Thank you. At this point, we welcome anyone in attendance that is interested in speaking to council to do so. Kay, do we have anyone that signed up this evening?
We do not.
Okay, so is there anyone that maybe didn't know about the sign up that would like to speak to council this evening? Okay, great. Moving on to our official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council, and all assembled. It's been quite a day. A beautiful day, but it's a day that we proclaimed on your behalf, behalf of the citizens of Bowling Green, Nursing Home Day. And so I had several visits in that regard with some of our citizens who are, in many respects, the most vulnerable. And it was a very interesting experience. And then it turned around and we were celebrating those on the other side of 90 and over with a dinner out at St. Mark's that Denise and all of her associates have put on there. Looked like it was going to be a nice feat. I had to leave. I couldn't enjoy that dinner there, but the numbers of people over 90, it was really, it was an interesting experience, as it always is, and a couple of over 100. So it was fascinating. But once again, may I underscore my thanks and appreciation for your strong participation in the public forum held on Monday, May 8th, concerning the Nexus Pipeline project and its proximity to the city's water treatment plant, as we know, on the Malmy River. I'm especially grateful to Steve Kendall, WBGTV, who I believe was exceptionally helpful in his role as forum moderator. He's very, very fair and balanced and tried to make sure in asking questions. A lot of your constituents submitted questions through you, tried to make sure that there was balance in that regard and get as many questions asked as possible. But the questions posed by you and your constituents showed a real depth of interest and a concern about the proposed project. And I know that you join with me in praising the time commitment and thoughtful responses to those questions and the related commentary by our outstanding independent panel of geologic experts, namely Dr. Charles Onash, Dr. Andrew Kerr, Mark Baranowski of Columbus, and Stephen Champa of Worthington. I was really heartened by the lead editorial in today's Toledo Blave, and I believe you might even have a copy in front of you there, about the forum titled "Public Has A Right To Question." And I thought that was a refreshing editorial and the public, I would even say, the public's right to know. And that's what we're trying to get at here. As a result of the forum and the continuing questioning process, I hope you might have a chance to review the attached draft of a letter to be sent to FERC and to U.S. Senators Brown and Portman and Congressman Latta, as well as to Nexus. With some slight modifications, that letter will also be sent to Senator Randy Gardner and Representative Teresa Gavirone, as well as to the Ohio EPA and the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and possibly to the PUCO, or any state agency having some degree of oversight responsibilities. And I think you heard me, and I know several of you have been frustrated on this point about who has oversight, who watches what goes on. And we've seen some legal actions taken, some fines and so forth by state agencies here in the last few weeks of a pipeline project down in southeastern Ohio. And, but it's not clear at all. It's kind of fuzzy in that regard, and especially from, I know a lot of you feel the same way I do about the EPA, what their role might be in this regard. So please let me know posthaste, if that's not too strong of pushing you, if you wish to see the letter modified in any manner. So I'm totally open to any suggestions. I wrote that the other day, and staff has had a chance to review it as well. And, but please, if you see something, I've tried to, you know, take the summary from the panel discussion, plus lots of other inquiries that we've all been wrestling with. I know you've been asking questions, as I have, right along, and we've received some information from Washington. Some of it's been helpful, others just been kind of glossy over, gloss over the, some of the very basic facts and that. So we're trying to get beyond the glossiness and get into more in-depth there. So feel free to offer any suggestions that you might have with that proposed letter that I'm eager to get off tomorrow or Wednesday at the very latest. I am really pleased with the overwhelmingly positive response to the city's offer and announcement last Thursday to provide land for the construction of a new senior center and the Wood County Center for Aging. And I'm so pleased tonight that we have Denise Neets is here and Colleen Smith is here representing the board, and I'm sure that if you have any questions, they'd be more than happy to try to answer from their perspective there. But this has been quite an interesting process, and I'm very grateful to Denise and her board for all the time that they've been working with Lori and with all of us in trying to sort out a number of aspects of this very, potentially very, very exciting and very promising project. I know the issue is now officially, and of course, and a long last, I might say, because there have been quite a few discussions in this regard, but it's now before you. And this proposed action by the city inevitably raises the question of whether or not the site of the current senior center might be a logical site for a new municipal building. And my answer is pretty straightforward, yes. But there are at least two critical components for that to happen, at least from my perspective, and I suspect from the perspective of others. First, either plans and a timetable for the new senior center, just what that timetable is there. They've talked for about two to three years. And second, and concurrently, an in-depth assessment of that site for a new municipal building. And so all of those things do entail some degree of time factors, and I think we're all eager to see the process move along. I've had a number of seniors that have stopped me, and some have even spoken out rather openly about it, saying, "I hope I'm still living because I want to see that building." They like the idea. They especially like the proposal for 90 parking spaces. I credit Denise. She was always angling for more. And because we know how critically important parking is to our, the folks that do appreciate and use in great numbers, the services of our next door neighbor here. And one of the frustrations has been, over the years, the lack of parking spots, and it's frustrated some of them. And of course, there are other ADA issues. We won't go into them now. We know what they are, just getting in and out of that building that was built in 1913. Also, before you, I do have, the month of May is typically a time that we recommend to you for your consideration, new board and commission members, and of course, we say goodbye to those residents who are finishing their service to the city. I would like to very briefly say thank you publicly, and I've done this before their respective bodies, too, I must say, in presenting them with a special certificate, but publicly to a few such residents who have served this community, namely, and most recently, Brady Gaskins and also Reyna Calderon. Brady served on the Planning Commission since 2005, and Reyna served on the Board of Zoning Appeals since 2005. Both have contributed immensely to the work of their respective groups, and I thank them for all that they have done for the city of Bowling Green and its citizens. I bring to you tonight a lengthy list of appointments, which was distributed to you previously. The memorandum sent last week outlines appointments that I ask your consideration to be confirmed. These are essentially reappointments. Each appointment will be effective June 1 of this year. The memorandum has been sent to Kay, who will ensure that it is a part of the minutes, and I know you have that list before you. The only one that I really worry about here is the Bicycle Safety Commission, if Ms. Ottley has got the permission of her mother to serve and represent students there, and that important assignment there. It's wonderful that Reagan is willing to do that. And of course, the Human Relations Commission, I'm really pleased with Jenny Dever. She's done so much out at the high school to demonstrate leadership, especially for the Gay-Straight Alliance that we've had before you. We've been recognized by the Human Relations Commission. And Eric, as middle school principal, Eric Radebaum, simply was, had to step back because of his time commitments and that. So I'm really pleased that Jennifer is able to, or Jenny, as we like to call her, is willing to step forward. Zoning Appeals, David Flager is going to learn that he shouldn't come before council and highlight issues, you know, say, "Okay, there's a way to do some of these things here." So I'm grateful that David's going to be stepping in. And the others are all pretty much straightforward, and all, every one of these individuals on your list there have served with, selfishly as you would expect, and with great dedication. And we just, we could not function, as you well know, as a city government without these many boards and commissions, and also individual appointments that represent the city there. And so I know you share with me a real special sense of gratitude for their service. And so, and with that, just several quick reminders about upcoming events. We have the ODOT-sponsored public briefing session at the Stroh Center beginning at 4:00 p.m. tomorrow concerning the I-75 East Worcester Street roundabouts. Then on Wednesday at 9:45, we have the Kroger Grand Reopening Ribbon Cutting Ceremony. Maybe they'll give us GPS things to find our way around the store or something. I don't know. It's been an intriguing process there, and I know Sue Clark is here. She has really worked hard with them and the folks in both Cincinnati and Columbus and throughout the region here. And I guess from, double the size of that store, and really, I think, Sue, I'm correct, that's the largest store now in northwest Ohio? Yeah. Okay. Then we have, and Chief Hetrick would want me to remind you of this, that the annual Police Memorial Service at the courthouse beginning at noon on Thursday. Right. Thank you, Tony. And on, of course, Saturday, as Brian O'Connell may expand on it, if you wish. If you don't, that's all right, too, because I think everything's in place. But the solar field ribbon cutting ceremony on Saturday, beginning at 11:00 a.m. at the Carter Road site, and that should be really neat, and it looks like the weather's going to be ideal for that as well. So, and I know there's a lot of real sense of curiosity about that, that whole site, those 85,000 solar panels and all the 20-kilowatt operation and so forth. So with that, that concludes my report, unless you have questions of me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say, first of all, I want to say thank you. Thanks to you and President Osbacher for drafting the letter about the Nexus Pipeline. I've been able to review most of it, and I think it sounds very strongly and appropriately worded. The only concern I have, and it has nothing to do with any action by anybody at the city, is I'm concerned about the timetable that we have, because we really don't know what that is. We don't really know what the timetable is with respect to the pipeline because of the current lack of quorum with FERC. And so my question is, you know, is there a potential situation that we might have where we're sending the correspondence, we're trying to get more answers, and action's taken before we get those answers? And that's not necessarily a question that you might be able to answer, but it's a question that I'm kicking around because I'm concerned about it, and I think that we should discuss it, and we should have a, some discussion among council members and dialoguing with the administration following the panel discussion, because I think it might be time for us to take more action if we're not getting the kind of answers that we want.
Yeah, and, well, you're right. It's a source of a great deal of frustration, because it involves, obviously, the federal government. And we're spending tonight talking about, you know, our financial situation and so forth, and I think you heard all the panelists say that to have a lot more knowledge than I suspect most of us have with, regarding FERC, that it's not easy to beat the federal government. But at the same time, and I think this is perhaps true in some other parts of the state, I think it's important for us, and I think we've been trying to, it's, I've kind of viewed it as a building block approach of trying to take information and put it and share it, and building a track record. And in terms of basically due diligence, of trying to establish a record of concern, rather than have this thing go forward and then something go amiss, and then you say, "Well, why didn't we, you know, at least telegraph it? Why didn't you see it?" and so forth. So, you know, it's kind of frustrating for municipalities in this kind of situation to take on the federal government. I know that one, a city has done this. It's a city that has a fair amount of economic wealth, and they're being threatened over there by this same pipeline group. It's going to go right through the heart of their city. It's going to go up against some of their parks, as I understand it. And more importantly, it's going to cut into the, where they have kind of a sense of World Trade Center or Trade Free Zone adjacent, immediately adjacent to the Akron Canton Airport. And it's, it could really cut into their whole, the economic impact of that is rather considerable. So they have, as I have read in the paper and from other sources as well, dedicated $100,000 with a Cleveland law firm to try to fight this. But we don't have those kinds of resources, and as we heard, even with one of our, with Andrew Kerr, Dr. Kerr, who's really studied this in great depth and has seen some of these battles elsewhere and so forth, he talked about the realities of it all, of trying to take on, basically, the federal government. So that's my only hope, Daniel, that we can, you know, try our best to keep pressing the issues. If you want to sharpen the focus on anything in the letter, that's fine. I tried my best in writing that. I haven't shared, in all fairness to Mike. Mike, I ask if you would be willing to sign it, but you haven't had, you're seeing the letter, my draft, for the first time. So I think it's a matter of getting it off, a quick leg. I've been pleased with Senator Brown's staff. I've had some direct interactions there. I have not heard from Senator Portman at all, and I would really hope that we could enlist their support as well. Congressman Latta has sent the transmittal-type things there to FERC. I'm disappointed, as I suspect you are, with the Nexus group, because, you know, they just assumed us not be raising any questions at all, of course. So I think trying to highlight and emphasize and reemphasize some of these very basic points, I'd like to think, at least we've got a record to go back to, and if we see some openings, that we can do a more aggressive press, we will certainly do that.
Yeah, I think in terms of suggestions, again, I think it's really strongly worded. I really, I really like what you've put here. The only thing off the top of my head that I can think of is, to avoid the potential situation of this moving forward without taking into account all of the concerns that we've aired to date before we get answers to these questions, and this is just speaking for myself, but I think it might be a good idea for us to put some kind of timetable of our own into the letter, so that if we, if we either don't get answers from folks, if they drag their feet on this, then we just say, "Okay, we did our part. We did what we could do, and now we're going to the next step." So I don't know what kind of timetable that would look like, but I guess that would be my suggestion.
And the next step would be?
Yeah, what is the next step?
Well, that's the thing. That's why I want to have the discussion with council, because, you know, I imagine there's a range of opinion on what, if anything, we should do following this kind of work. And speaking for myself, I think that even if there is a low probability of us getting the pipeline rerouted, or at minimum, I think it's worth taking that chance. And I think we are seeing progress in some other areas, because we've seen, just very recently, FERC did at least impose some fines on the folks behind the Rover Pipeline. So I think while it's good for us to be realistic about the probability of success, it's also important for us in terms of, I'm just on a moral and policy basis, to stand up against this and do what we can to at least avoid the threat to the water treatment plan. And so I would like to have that discussion, because I don't assume that everybody sees this the same way as I do, but I do feel strongly that there's a good chance that we're not going to get good answers to these questions, despite all the due diligence that all the folks involved in this have put in. And so I would like to see us have that discussion, so we can refine a potential set of future steps.
I would agree with Daniel. You know, I expect from, you know, what I've learned from this process is there's a lot of rubber stamping that goes on. I have no belief in FERC at this point, and certainly will have less going forward. You know, and the steps we can take, there's been discussion of a motion to intervene that will not stop Nexus, but I think it's something that we could do, and it's something that we could do in addition to a letter, a strongly worded letter. You know, we don't have hundreds of thousands of dollars, but I don't think that a motion to intervene, if it had a cost, it would be negligible. And that's been a process that I've been interested in for a while regarding this pipeline. You know, I think Andrew Kerr, I missed the panel. I was out of town, but, you know, listened to it today. You know, he's, his opinion is that it basically might not even get a hearing out of them, that they're that cavalier, is my impression of the whole process. But I want to feel morally good about challenging them to the extent we can. A letter does that, a motion to intervene, I think, does that in a stronger way. And, you know, again, do I expect them to honor it? Perhaps not, but Nexus is getting challenged every step along the way of this process by Waterville, by us, by places in Michigan are lining up. And even though I don't expect a single action to greatly influence this, a number of actions may. So I would just ask my peers to consider, again, the motion to intervene. I'd be more than willing to look into what that would cost. I think Andrew Kerr would be happy to consult with us on that. He's written these things. So just seconding what Daniel is saying, I think I'd like to see us consider that additional step.
John, who's that motion with?
That motion is to FERC, I believe, and I haven't read it for a while, but is that what Andrew Kerr was speaking of?
Yes, to FERC.
To FERC, yes.
Mr. Chair, I agree that we need to take steps, but I think this letter is essential that we get it out soon, because if the media is correct, the president has appointed two new people to sit on that FERC commission, and they're both very pro-pipeline people. They were appointed, I think, Thursday, Friday of last week.
Yeah, I don't know that, and that's an assumption, but they have to, I believe they have to be confirmed by the Senate, too.
They have to be confirmed by the Senate, yes. But the appointments have been made. So for that reason, I think a good first step is a letter. That doesn't, sending the letter in no way keeps us from taking other actions.
I don't know either. Maybe someone, maybe our city attorney knows what a motion to intervene really means legally.
Is that like joining a friend of the court?
Action, that's not the end. It's just the beginning. That's why, you're right, it might not cost much to file to join, but now you're in. And you need to have a handle on the resources it'll take to participate, because just saying we're going to join and then we're not going to do anything else, I don't think that's realistic at all. If you're going to join the lawsuit, then you need to be willing to commit.
Well, the motion is-
Mike, I'm going to make sure we're not talking about two different things. There would be a motion, you could have a motion to join the lawsuit, and then that's as you just described. There's also a motion to intervene, which is just a regulatory filing with FERC. It doesn't mean that you're, I don't think that would, it'd anything else. Okay? I think what, I think what John and Daniel were referring to, the motion to intervene, file with the regulatory commission, not to join the lawsuit.
Yeah, I agree with Mike in terms of joining the lawsuit. You're looking at pretty big six figures at some point down the road. When that other city, Green, said they appropriated $100,000 to investigate the lawsuit, that's just the down payment. That's just the beginning. But I don't know exactly what, you know, in terms of making a regulatory filing, is that something you could do, Mike, or would you need an outside law firm to do it?
Well, Dr. Kerr did say he would assist us with that if we so wanted that.
Well, I would like- He's not an attorney either, so.
Right.
Yeah, I would like to suggest that if this is something that there's some interest in, that perhaps, you know, John and Daniel, you work with Dr. Kerr to accumulate this information as far as the process. Certainly, the very next step has to be to coordinate a review of that, a comprehensive review of that with the mayor, Lori Treter, and Mr. Marsh. Obviously, this is going to take a little bit of time, so I think that, Mayor, your idea of us reviewing this letter and filing this letter, which at first glance looks very much like you, what you and I discussed the other day, let's get that off in the mail. And if you guys want to start working on determining just what it is that you're proposing and what the ramifications are, then we'll subject that to a comprehensive review and consider that at a later date.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one little question. Mr. Mayor, you didn't mention sending this to FERC when you were listing who you would send it to.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, I said the attached draft of a letter to be sent to FERC, and then to our senators and so forth there, as well as to Nexus. I think they do know. John Sheridan, their governmental affairs person is the one, the only one I've heard from. I haven't heard from, you know.
I wouldn't expect to hear much of Nexus.
No, reaching out into the great cyberspace.
I'm all for starting with step one, send the letter out.
Yeah, that's-
Are there any other questions for the mayor? Very good. Is there a motion to approve the board appointments, board and commission appointments as presented by Mayor Edwards?
So moved? Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
The motion passes. The board and commission appointments are approved as presented. And Kay, you do have these officially for the public record?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Treter. Questions for Lori? Thank you. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor. Questions for Heather? Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley. And don't say that Lori and Heather gave you her time.
No, but I promise I'll be quick. But it is May, so there's just about 1,000 things going on in Parks and Rec. So very briefly, I do want to thank Coach Seeliger and Coach Edwards for coaching and participating. No, no, a quota on players, that'd be me, for helping with the basketball celebration and stroke awareness that we did.
Can I interrupt here and publicly congratulate Coach Edwards on the fine victory?
I was on Coach Mayor's team, so, thank you. But I, we- But I, we sincerely appreciate that. I think it was great, and we look forward to making that game an annual tradition. So I know Juice was very pleased. So thank you again. I mentioned, I believe, at the last meeting, I saved the date for the ribbon cutting for the splash pad creatures, but I do have a flyer that I can hand out to you all from the chamber. It is June 7th, obviously, at the pool at the splash pad at 1:00. So mark your calendars for that. And speaking of the pool, it is May, so May 27th is the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. That's like two weekends from now, believe it or not. So water will be going in end of this week or early next week into the pool, and guards will be getting in the water on May 23rd or 24th. So the pool is opening. Reminder, if you had a pool pass last year, please renew by May 18th, and you will save, you can renew at last year's rate and save yourself $5. Lunches and concerts are also right around the corner, and believe it or not, the very first lunch in the park will be before our next council meeting. Friday, June 2nd, Mayor and Mrs. Edwards will be our servers for that. It is South Side 6 with Tim Taggy, and I have the whole list of concerts and lunches there. The first concert is June 11th with the Bowling Green Area Community Band. And that's all I have for Parks and Rec, so I'll put on my bike safety helmet and remind you that this Friday is Bike to Work and School Day. So just want to encourage everyone to do that. Please wear a helmet if you do so. And this Wednesday, May 17th, is the first time in Bowling Green is hosting their own Ride of Silence. That is, starts at 7:00 from City Park. Anyone interested, they request getting there at 6:30. If you need more information on that, you can go to the wearetraffic.org website. And that is all I have unless you have questions of me.
Questions for Kristen.
Did the Bicycle Safety Commission review the nominations for the spokes?
Yes and no. We have a meeting tomorrow, and we're going to formally make our recommendation and then hopefully get that set up for the first council meeting in June.
And is that 6:00 tomorrow?
That is 6:00 tomorrow, right here, yes.
City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh. Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
Just a quick update, Mr. Seeliger asked for an update on the Conyac water line. So we had the intersection of Winter Garden and Conyac closed this past week for getting that water line extension across the intersection. We had some hiccups about midweek, which caused a delay, so we had to keep the closure through the weekend and then into today. We were able to get the valves closed that were the nature of the problem out there. We had to get a repair part made for one of those. So that work should have been done today, and the hole should have been backfilled today. The main line work is now complete except for the connection of the water line at Devonshire. There'll be an outage for some customers on Devonshire, but that will be the last of the bulk of it. So from this point forward, for the rest of this month, we should be working on water service lines, getting customers switched over to the new, the new water line that's out there now, and abandoning the old one. The hope is to be done by the end of this month, and the paving job would start shortly after that. We still have a sanitary sewer project to do in that area, so that will be coming up hopefully later in 2017, but have not got that project under contract just yet. Also, the Tammerac on that project has been closed for some time for stone storage, and we're trying to consolidate, consolidate that stone storage and get it opened up for one lane of travel on Tammerac. Another item I have, as Mayor mentioned, is the solar project ribbon cutting for local residents. If they want to come out and see the site, I'd be happy to have them on May 20th at 11:00 a.m. Here's a, here's a handout. I have one of those. I know the chamber is helping us to coordinate that, and if anybody would like to RSVP, you can send them to the chamber, and that's all I have.
Questions for Brian. You have solar-powered scissors.
We'll get, we'll get the mayor hooked up with a chainsaw, solar powered. Do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
I know the mayor touched on it, but I wanted to highlight again, the public meeting tomorrow at the Stro Center. This is your opportunity for the public to come out and see what's been going on so far, some of the schedules, some of the aesthetics that'll be changing out there, kind of how the roadwork will be performed, where a bike path and a walking path will be, getting across the overpass with the lighting, those sorts of things, timelines. So if you ever want to speak your piece or have any comments, now's the time to come out and let ODOT, the city, Pogomire, and BG SU, and the Federal Highway Administration know your thoughts. So 4 to 6 tomorrow at the Stro Center. It's in the Hall of Fame area down where we had the public meeting several years ago. So, on one, come on. That's my report. If you have any questions, it's me.
Questions for Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for those official reports. We move forward to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
From the Finance Committee, I have an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign a contract with the Bowling Green Employees Organization and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. President.
Mr. Seeliger.
From the Public Lands Committee and Building Committee, I have an ordinance authorizing an exchange of real estate with the First Presbyterian Church of Bowling Green and the subsequent donation of real estate to the Wood County Committee on Aging for the ultimate use as a senior, new senior citizens center and related facilities.
Thank you, Scott.
Mr. President.
Mr. Zanfordino.
From the Transportation and Safety Committee, we have an ordinance amending and adopting Section 7501 and creating and adopting, excuse me, everyone, adopting Section 75.18 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding low speed, under speed, or utility vehicle or mini truck.
Thank you, John. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
Just to recap, the committee of the whole meeting that was held at 6:00 this evening, and of course, the topic was to consider enhancing funding for the general fund, we all know is under some distress. We decided, I think, to further consider certain options and to eliminate others. The ones that are still under consideration are redistributing the income tax, privatizing or charging a fee for trash collection, assessing a property tax for tree trimming, and/or cutting funding to other entities. We decided to eliminate from further consideration, unless there's some real change of minds between now and our next meeting. We considered, we eliminated raising the income tax, reducing police and/or fire staffing, eliminating the city arborist position, and ending tax reciprocity. Those options are no longer under consideration unless there's a change of heart for next meeting. And in that vein, Kay, I would ask that we have another committee of the whole meeting at 6:00 on June 5th to do that.
I think we scheduled that last time, and it is on the calendar.
Okay, it's already on the calendar, okay. And folks, I thought we made good progress tonight, and, you know, I, we'd really like to perhaps make up our minds at the next meeting, come up with some combination of those, those options that get us to about the amount of money that we need to get to. It's not necessary that we have a final, final decision on everything next meeting, but we should be getting pretty close by the end of that meeting. So look forward to that discussion.
Bob, just one thing to add. One thing that we discussed was facilitate, begin to discuss the facilitation of a meeting between council and the Board of Public Utilities to discuss that.
Yeah, that's right, you brought that up.
So I'd like to suggest that you, after this meeting, begin that process with talking with Lori and Brian O'Connell, I suppose, should be involved in that. Let's just try to make that a next step, please.
I've already got a meeting scheduled with Lori and Brian Bushong on Wednesday afternoon.
Very good.
I'll make that one of the topics at that meeting.
Thank you. I'm a little out of order here, and just Lori probably thought she was safe, but I'm not so sure about the golf cart ordinance, and I've tried to look up a little bit of information. You don't have to tell me a lot right now, but if you have a little more information on where this is coming from, or maybe some pros and cons, so that way I have a little time to think about that. Oh, if you have it, well, the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, if we're going to be voting at the next, making up our minds at the next meeting about the general fund, could we also have a report beforehand, before that evening, about how we would be better off contracting it out as opposed to having the city perform the service?
Yeah, I think.
Is that a possibility?
Sandy's asking about, excuse me, follow-up information for the trash questions that we discussed in our committee of the whole meeting, trying to determine if it's reasonable that we would expect some answers to those questions prior to our next committee of the whole meeting, I believe.
If we're going to make up our mind at the next meeting, I'd like, yes.
Thank you. Additional council committee reports. Very good. Moving on to the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading, ordinance number 8588 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign a contract with the Bowling Green Employees Organization and declaring an emergency.
President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 8588 its second and third readings.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes. The motion passes. Ordinance 8588 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8589 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing an exchange of real estate with the First Presbyterian Church of Bowling Green and the subsequent donation of real estate to the Wood County Committee on Aging for the ultimate use as a new senior citizen center and related facilities. Ordinance number 8590 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 75.01 and creating and adopting Section 75.18 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding low speed, under speed, or utility vehicle or mini truck. Legislation for second reading. Resolution number 3664 for second reading. Resolution authorizing an application and a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for congestion mitigation and air quality funds for the improvement of the intersection of East Worcester Street and Dunbridge Road.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give resolution 3664 its third reading.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes. The motion passes. Resolution 3665 is adopted.
Resolution number 8589 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing an exchange of real estate with the First Presbyterian Church of Bowling Green and the subsequent donation of real estate to the Wood County Committee on Aging for the ultimate use as a new senior citizen center and related facilities. Ordinance number 8590 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 75.01 and creating and adopting Section 75.18 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding low speed, under speed, or utility vehicle or mini truck. Legislation for second reading. Resolution number 3664 for second reading. Resolution authorizing an application and a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for congestion mitigation and air quality funds for the improvement of the intersection of East Worcester Street and Dunbridge Road.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give resolution 3664 its third reading.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for resolution 3664.
Resolution number 3664 for third reading. Resolution authorizing an application and a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for congestion mitigation and air quality funds for the improvement of the intersection of East Worcester Street and Dunbridge Road.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt resolution 3664.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3664 is adopted.
Resolution number 3665 for second reading. Resolution authorizing an application and a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for congestion mitigation and air quality funds for the improvement of the intersection of East Worcester Street and Campbell Hill Road.
President.
Mr. McComber.
Move to suspend the rules and give resolution 3665 its third reading.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes. The motion passes. The rules are suspended for resolution 3665.
Resolution number 3665 for third reading. Resolution authorizing an application and a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for congestion mitigation and air quality funds for the improvement of the intersection of East Worcester Street and Campbell Hill Road.
President.
Mr. McComber.
Move to adopt resolution 3665.
Tag it. It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes. The motion passes. Resolution 3665 is adopted.
Resolution number 3666 for second reading. Resolution adopting and authorizing and amended Housing Revolving Loan Fund Program Policy and Procedures Manual. Resolution number 3667 for second reading. Resolution adopting and authorizing an amended Community Development Block Grant Housing Policy and Procedures Manual. Ordinance number 8584 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to execute the Ohio Department of Transportation's preliminary legislation for the installation of marked crosswalks and other related equipment along East Worcester Street between Manville Avenue and Campbell Hill Road and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 8584 its third reading.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes. The motion passes. The rules are suspended for ordinance 8584.
Ordinance number 8584 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to execute the Ohio Department of Transportation's preliminary legislation for the installation of marked crosswalks and other related equipment along East Worcester Street between Manville Avenue and Campbell Hill Road and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for ordinance 8584.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes. The motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for ordinance 8584.
President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt ordinance 8584.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes. The motion passes. Ordinance 8584 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8585 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sell and/or otherwise dispose of miscellaneous equipment not needed for any municipal purpose. Ordinance number 8587 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the leasing of municipally-owned property for agricultural purposes. And there is no legislation for third reading.
Thank you, Kay. That completes the items on our agenda this evening. Is there any additional business to come before council? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? It's moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion passes. We are adjourned.
That was a great one, Bob. Very good. Welcome, Duncan.